Just want to make sure you're aware.
One seven?
Yeah. Done. All right.
Always welcome.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order on June 18th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavich.
Here.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Jett.
Here. Please stand for the clerk. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to invite Carl Valinatos, on behalf of Character Counts, to present two individuals with awards. Carl, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium. And...
Thank you all. And as many of you know, from time to time, the McHenry Area Character Counts Coalition has nominations that they honor from the community to recognize certain citizens for exemplary acts of character that we want to hold up as models to all. And these are certainly out of the ordinary. I submitted two nominations a few months ago. And both, one of the individuals is here, and I am expecting the other one here shortly. So I'll start with the first one. And both of the nominations are closely related. My first nomination is for Mr. Doug Martin, who we all know is the Director of Economic Development for the City of McHenry. And Doug is an incredible human being. His passion and love and caring for this city goes far beyond just economic development. And that really comes out. And I have been working very closely with both Mr. Martin and my other nominee, Mr. Keith Wagner, President of Fabrique Moldoplastics, for about three years now, to build up the manufacturing and career and technical education programs at McHenry High School. And about three years ago, I went to Doug. We had this idea of having a MTI Expo. And we had this grand vision of trying to find 20 exhibitors. And I vividly remember, "Mr. Martin, Doug, do you think we could get 20 exhibitors?" And between both of us, and you know how Doug runs off with things, he said, "Yeah, I think we can do that." Within two months, we had almost 50 exhibitors at the first MTI Career Expo. And I know that's something that Mayor Jett has been a big part of. Everybody has really been a big part of it. So Doug, that was really the beginning of Doug helping us as a high school, create some really, really incredible partnerships that has paid some enormous dividends for us. One of the first people that Doug introduced us to is getting ready to walk in right now, and he's being wanted currently, that noise, Mr. Keith Wagner. And between both of them, we were able to not only build up the MTI, but we were able to create some lasting partnerships that is now helping us build an incubator EDU program and has helped our manufacturing teacher create an incredible manufacturing advisory board. So what started as, "Hey, do you think we could get 20 exhibitors to help show off this incredible community, these incredible business partners we have," turned into an amazing amount of grants and financial assistance and just contacts of an amazing amount of people in this community. Business leaders like Mr. Wagner and city officials like Mr. Martin. So between Doug, who's helped us build these community partnerships, and Mr. Wagner, Keith, why don't you go ahead and stand up, and Doug, if you go ahead and stand up, that'd be great, because we're going to give you an award here in a second. So from that, we've been able to connect with Keith Wagner, who we all know is one of the great business leaders of our community. And he has been one of our patrons. Doug has been a champion of our schools. And Mr. Wagner has been one of our greatest patrons to help us build manufacturing programs, a manufacturing advisory board, and now, this fall, McHenry High School opened an incubator EDU program. And we have been able to get an incredible amount of donations for all of those programs, thanks to these two gentlemen. So thank you so much for exhibiting caring, passion, responsibility, everything that Character Counts represents. So, thank you. Thanks for all you do for Illinois City, but for McHenry High School.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And you get...
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
At this time, I'm going to open up for public comment. Is there anyone in the gallery that would like to make a public comment at this time? Sir, just step up to the podium, state your name for public record.
French Service Code 568 HST. Just a quick comment, okay? I know you're not going to talk about Speedway and Rimwood and Montclair, but I'm asking that we intend to say things. Is there a procedure we follow in order to get a little bit of time at that meeting? Do we do something, I mean, may we request it in writing or something? You understand what I'm saying here?
You get a public comment, just like any other item.
But is it more than a comment, or I'm not sure that what I have to say, there's going to be some questions? So will that be okay? It might take more than...
It's just comments. So you could give us your comments and input, but at that point, there's no questions to be answered.
Okay, no problem.
If you have questions, contact the staff, you know, Ross, Doug, or myself. We can try to help you with any questions that you may have. If you want to set up something in, you know, in a setting at City Hall, and you want to ask a few people to come in, like we've done in the past, I'm more than happy to meet with you all to do that.
That's fair.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? This time, I see none. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring the week of June 21st to June 29th as City of McHenry Bicycle Week. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation at this time. Proclamation declaring June 21st to June 29th, 2018, as City of McHenry Bicycle Week, whereas the bicycle is an environmentally sound, economical, and effective means of transportation, recreation, and exercise; and whereas use of the motorcycle, the motorcycle, no, the bicycle, that's what I drive, that's what I... Use of the bicycle for personal transportation benefits residents of the City of McHenry by reducing traffic, reducing carbon emissions, improving air quality, and decreasing dependence on fossil fuel energy sources. And whereas use of the bicycle for recreation encourages families and friends to spend time together outdoors enjoying City of McHenry's parks, McHenry County Conservation District properties, trails, and quiet residential neighborhoods. And whereas use of the bicycle for exercise provides adults and children with positive health benefits, including decreasing body fat levels, increasing cardiovascular fitness, increasing muscle strength, and decreasing stress levels. And whereas the City of McHenry, Illinois endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling, inviting all residents and city employees to participate in the Bike Haven's Sunday morning monthly group ride with the mayor on June 24th, 2018, beginning at 8:00 a.m., utilizing Safe City Streets and the Prairie Trail, and Epic Cycles Family Bike with the Mayor Event Ride to Veterans Park on Thursday, June 28th, 2018, at 5:30 p.m., beginning at Peterson Park. And whereas there is a need for all motor vehicle drivers and bicyclists to be better educated regarding traffic laws and bicycle safety, now therefore to be proclaimed by the City of McHenry, Illinois, that the week of June 21st, June 29th, 2018, is hereby designated City of McHenry Bicycle Week, and all residents are encouraged to enjoy riding a bicycle in a safe and responsible manner. Thank you. So as of June 29th, I'm going to have a heart attack. That's pretty much what that says. So the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Alderman Glenn, thank you for joining us through the rainstorm here. So we'll make sure that you're in attendance here. The Consent Agenda, is there any council members that wanting to pull any items for separate consideration? Alderman Curry.
Hi, ma'am.
Alderman Santee.
I'll say one. Thank you.
Any others? Thank you. At this time, looking for a motion to approve the following Consent Agenda Item 6B through 6M. Alderman Santee.
I will make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items B through M as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Glenn.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on these items? Alderman Curry.
Just to comment on Items B and C, or a question, actually. The engineer's estimate of probable cost, was that, or outside engineer that does?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is, it's nice to see that we have bids here that are 25% to 30% below our budgeted amounts, but it also causes me to question how well those estimated costs are actually done. So it's just, just follow my comments. Of course, I see on one of the bids, you know, that same engineering company was 15% high versus a little bid, so I guess maybe we should... I guess the comment is, we should be looking at some of these estimated costs and questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Alderman Schaefer.
Item B is the, have all the homeowners that are going to be affected by that been communicated with?
In this early design process, in like the survey stage, we had reached out to them. I've been on site quite a bit and have met, I would say, probably a third of them. But the plan is in the next week or two to reach out on an individualization to every homeowner on the street, particularly on the sides where the water main is going in, and give them a public notice, and just give them a few minutes of our time and see if they have any questions for us.
I did get a, the reason I ask is, I did get a question, is the, will any of their driveway aprons be cut into or opened up, or is it all in the street?
So on Timothy, the water main is going on the south side of the road. So pretty much every apron on that south side is going to get ripped out and replaced new.
Okay.
And then on Clover, the water main is going to be going in on the north side, and the same thing, we're removing replacement of the driveway apron out to the right way line.
So Timothy, south, Clover, north.
Correct.
Okay. Because the question came up, there's a brand-new, all cement apron on Clover. And I don't know if they're aware of that, if they were...
Yes.
I'm just, yeah, Alderman Schaefer, I'll just let you know that, because Director Schmidt's not here. Yeah, we spoke to make sure, yeah, there's definitely one apron that was done by the homeowner at their cost, and...
Oh, okay, you're referring to the very first one on by the corner at Big...
And it's, she's on the south side, so we're, we cover our bases on that, yeah.
So they've been communicated to?
That it's not going to affect their brand-new apron, is what I'm asking. I don't know if that person has my...
I didn't, no, but I will pass that information on to you after the meeting, just to get back to that land.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Any others? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. The item that was pulled was 6A by two council members. I'm looking for a motion to approve 6A. Alderman Schaefer.
Make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Mahavich.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Curry.
Well, I wish we hadn't made the motion first, but, you know, as I said last year when this came up, and I know other municipalities have looked askance at this as well. The Prevailing Wage Act in the State of Illinois is actually costing municipalities and governments and taxpayers ultimately. It costs us money that probably doesn't need to be spent. And what I would have proposed here is that we do not pass this ordinance, and that what we do pass is a resolution, which would have to be written, obviously. A resolution stating that we don't agree with the Prevailing Wage Act, however, we'll comply with the law as we do our bidding and our letting our bids. In other words, we'll comply with the law, but to pass an ordinance that says, Jesus, we agree with this, which is essentially what it does, I don't, I just, I don't agree with that.
Any other discussion by counsel? Alderman Glenn.
Yeah, I quite agree with Alderman Curry as far as the prevailing wage. However, I tend to wonder if we don't, if the council doesn't approve it, if we fail tonight, where does that put us as far as any grants, monies, or anything? That's what I would worry about more so than anything else. Does it affect any funding from the state?
David?
You know, I don't know what the rules are on that. The engineers might be better to give you an opinion about that, but I can give you an opinion that we have given an opinion in writing in the past, and we can do it again for the city, that adoption of an ordinance is not required by law, but compliance with the law is required. And that takes an indication from the city council that you're going to do so, and that communication should be sent to the Department of Labor. So that can take the form of a motion or a resolution would be better, that we actually send to the state along the lines of what Alderman Curry said. So in our opinion, you can do it either way. Whether that affects state funding and grants and so forth, I don't know. But we will comply with the law. You have to comply with the law.
Right. I just wonder if Alderman Curry was figuring out amending this motion to add that...
No, you won't be responding.
Well, yeah.
Well, first of all, I guess, you know, I understand there are other municipalities that have done this. Woodstock being one of them, and I don't, I'm not aware that there's been issues there. I'm not aware one way or the other.
There have not been.
There have been no issues?
No. Nor does the Department of Labor respond.
Right.
They, no, they can't get them to say anything.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, just personally, I just think it's a little ridiculous to force us, which is what that says, oh, you must pass an ordinance, and I don't agree with that. You know, comply with the law, but to pass an ordinance just doesn't, doesn't track for me. So sure, I can, I would move, we would amend the motion on the table to, rather than pass an ordinance, we pass a resolution indicating, and they don't have to be written, but indicating that we will comply with the law, however, we are in disagreement in general terms with the Prevailing Wage Act.
So again, that motion to amend would be to simply provide direction to the staff to come back at the next meeting with a resolution along those lines.
Correct.
Yeah, our next meeting's the 10th, and the deadline, the deadline files July 15th, so we can do it on the 10th.
Alderman Schaefer.
I'll remove my motion.
Alderman Mahavich.
Agreed.
Okay.
So you have a second. So wait, you withdrew the motion, you withdrew the second, now I guess you have to withdraw your motion. You'll amend. To be effective.
We'll just pass the amendment.
All right, so make a motion now.
I'll withdraw the motion to amend, and then I will make a motion as stated, that we come back with a resolution to the Department of Labor indicating that we'll comply with the law, but we are not in general agreement with the Prevailing Wage Act.
Right. Any other discussion by counsel? Alderman Santee.
You have a second.
Oh, a second, yeah. Alderman Santee.
Yeah, I will second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by counsel? Alderman Schaefer.
I would just make sure that the, in doing this, again, because we've had this discussion multiple times and multiple years, that it doesn't have an effect on current projects and current funding of projects. And I still think we have to, I guess you would have to find this out, if we have to adopt an ordinance, but just make a resolution, which is just saying, you still have to have this ordinance.
There is no procedure, no, let me make this clear. First of all, I don't know the answer to the first part of that. The second part, there is no procedure to say you're not going to pass an ordinance, but we're going to do it anyway. We're going to have a resolution that's going to be sent to the Department of Labor that simply says, "We will comply with the statute, but we're not going to adopt an ordinance," in other words. There is really nothing in the law, I'll have a cover letter to you explaining how the rules don't require us to adopt an ordinance. It just doesn't say that.
Okay.
The Department of Labor, no. Municipalities make that assumption for whatever reason, and it's just not there. You have to comply with the law, period. It's an unfounded mandate, you have to do it.
Troy.
Sure.
Troy will check in to how it, how it affects the projects and funding.
Well, I can tell you, for I.D.A. projects, it's state-funded, even including NFT, prevailing wage requirements are right in the contract documents.
Yeah, which means we'll comply.
Yep.
And our contractor will comply, because we're requiring them to comply. But then that's not the question, you understand? The question is, if we don't adopt an ordinance, adopting prevailing wage will then adversely impact those projects. The simple failure to adopt the ordinance and send it to the Department of Labor, has had complication.
That'd be something I'd have to research.
That's why I'm giving it to you.
Something that's not...
That's an elusive concept.
All right, Troy's got it.
Troy knows the number.
Alderman Glenn.
Mr. Clarity, then what's on the table right now is the direct staff. And we are not voting on the prevailing wage tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion by counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to the individual action items, 7A. Is discussion to approve a transfer of a Class G1-3 issued to La Hacenda Restaurant Incorporated to El Gordo Mexican Restaurant Incorporated located at 929 North Front Street. Any discussion by counsel on this item? See none? Alderman Glenn?
All I'm going to state is just the fact that it's pretty simple, and it's just a transfer of ownership, and therefore we have to transfer the liquor license, that's it.
Correct. Any, there's also, just so you know, the applicants are here. One of the applicants are here this evening, so if you do have any questions, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? I see none. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a transfer of a Class G1-3 issued to La Hacienda. Restaurant Inc.
Hacienda.
Hacienda.
I took Spanish one over here.
It's really been it all.
Restaurant Incorporated to El Gordo Mexican Restaurant Incorporated located at 929 North Front Street. Alderman Santee.
I will make the motion as per...
No, you've got to read it. Second? Alderman Curry.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion to approve a sign variance at Two White Oaks at McHenry, located at 4605 West Crystal Lake Road, to allow two feather banners 10 feet in height by 31 inches wide to be posted on the property for a time period not to exceed December 31st, 2019. Ross, can you please present this item?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
Ross, can you correct my mistakes first?
Right. I just want to make one thing clear. It's actually 10 feet. It's correct in your supplement. So White Oaks has submitted a sign variance request to post two feather type banners at their location to help increase the visibility of their facility. Two feather banners, 10 feet tall, 31 inches wide, to be posted on the property for six months, not to exceed December 31st, 2018.
Thank you, Ross. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Santee.
Standard policy for these types of signage is six months?
30 days. Well, it's 60 days cumulative throughout the year, so you're allowed to put it in a 30-day increment. So you can post up to 60 days a year, 30 days at a time. Each time a separate permit.
Okay. And we've done this for multiple locations around town?
We have done this for the VFW once before.
That's the only one?
That I'm aware of.
Okay. No further, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Glenn.
Yeah, the sign they have up there now, is that a temporary or is that a permanent sign? That they have on the property right now? Just that wood bordered, bordered sign?
Is it for lease?
No, White Oaks.
They have a permanent sign there.
Yeah, it's a permanent sign.
That wood sign is a permanent sign?
Yes.
You mean with all the work and the effort that they put into that building, that's all they can put in it? Or is it just a, what is it, a two-by-four sign? I mean, it's...
I think it's a little larger.
It's larger than that.
It's four by eight.
Well, I know the size, but I mean, as far as framed and everything else, it's not really a, kind of a slapped-up sign, to be honest with you. We have done our eugenicists, and I think it helped them out as far as with their taking and combining the access of both facilities to the light. It's a plus for them, it's a plus for us on Crystal Lake Road. As far as being seen, it's quite evident what the place is, and it stands out, because if you look at what's on the north and the south of it, you know, there's nothing redeveloped, and this is all brand-new, it's wide open. There's really no reason to call attention with feather banners. And I just can't see why they would need feather banners out there for that period of time. I think it, in my opinion, is the fact that it's distracting. Anything that moves like that is distracting to the traffic, for one. And number two is, I don't think with the sign that's out there, even though it's, looks like a temporary sign, but if it's a permanent sign, whatever, it's still, everybody knows what White Oaks is, and I don't think it's going to change much, if anything. What's the benefit to the city as far as having those feather banners there? There really isn't. It's not like we're going to get more sales, tax revenue, or anything else. And to me, I just don't feel that it's a appropriate place to have those feather banners.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Curry.
Is the petitioner here?
Yeah, Kelly.
Yes.
Oh, okay, you both might, or whoever's going to answer, put him up to the podium for me. I'd just like to say, if you don't mind spending about $200,000 on a new sign, that would be great.
She's the boss. Hi, I'm Terry Schultz. I'm the campus administrator for Heritage Once in White Oaks at McHenry. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Okay. Well, the question I had is, I guess, I'm just not as familiar with your facilities. I mean, I know what they're, therefore it's a memory care facility, correct?
Correct.
So I guess I'm, you know, feather banners, we usually see, quite frankly, in car dealers or mattress stores or those types of things, that they want to do that for, like a grand opening or something. This is a grand opening, right?
No, we've actually been open for about eight months now, and we did have the feather banners up for a short time, and it did actually bring in more traffic to us. Because as you mentioned, our sign kind of doesn't really have some great visibility to it, but the traction, and Kelly can probably speak to that since she's my Director of Marketing, was a lot more than what we're getting currently. And so we were actually hoping, because currently we're at 38% occupancy after being open for almost a year. So it's kind of a hardship for us at the ceiling.
I guess, my, again, I'm finding it hard to imagine that people drive around the town looking for a place for mom, you know, because she's got, you know, memory issues or whatever, and they just drive by and say, "Oh, well, here's a place." I mean, I don't think, me personally, I wouldn't find a place like that, you know, in that manner. I mean, I don't think, me personally, I wouldn't find a place like that, you know, in that manner. I would, I would talk to healthcare professionals. I would, you know, probably do internet, you know, look on the internet, whatever is the way I would probably approach that and not drive by.
Most of our referral sources are drive-bys. So that's why it was important to us to have these out at least for another, you know, six months.
Yeah, and I think to distinguish between Heritage, because I grew up in McHenry, I live here now, and I know that people drive by and they see Heritage Woods and they don't see White Oaks. They don't see the different, it's a private pay memory care where Heritage Woods is supportive living. So they don't differentiate the difference between the buildings and what they're used for. I did notice that we had about a fifty percent traction increase in sales and tours when the banners were up, just briefly, for about twenty-eight days. We tracked that. So that's kind of what we're looking at, is just the difference in not having them and having them. I think people stop at that stop sign and they see Heritage Woods and they see the post office and they keep driving. And I don't think they take a second thought to what the building is.
Yeah, I guess I'm just surprised that that's the way people would find a facility like this.
It is surprising to me as well. We do get a lot of word of mouth. McHenry has a very good reputation, Heritage Woods specifically, for word of mouth. And a lot of people get referrals to us by word of mouth. So the banners do help with people finding us. You know, there's really not a competitor except for Fox Point in McHenry that is really the only one around for a while, until you get to Crystal Lake. So people do kind of get us, they say, "Are you over by the Charles Miller Road?" And nope, that's not us. We're by the high school. We're by Ace Hardware. So I do notice that the banners do help.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Alden McGladd.
For your time.
Good question.
Alden McGladd.
Ross, if they wanted to put up banners, they would have to get a sign permit for a short period of time, correct?
Yes.
And how many times a year can they do that?
Well, the ordinance is kind of funny. It's, you're allowed four postings a year, a thirty day maximum time to post, but only in sixty days cumulative time posting. So you could, you could do four postings at fifteen days apiece, four separate permits, but then thirty days has to elapse between each posting.
The way I look at it is, is how many times do you see something as you're going down the road, whether it's to work or wherever you're going, on a constant basis? And after you've seen it the first three or four times, it's totally ignored. And when something just pops up now and then, it's more effective. And yet, it doesn't, it stays within the ordinances and there's no reason they have to give any kind of variances or anything else on the sign ordinances. They can stay with the ordinances and still those feather banners can be effective and they only go up once in a while and not constantly, constantly out there, day in, day out. I don't really want to look at those feather banners as I leave my subdivision three times a day. Not the same thing over and over and over and over again. It bothers me when I take a look at the sign, because I'd rather see a nice big brick sign and granted, it's my preference, but it's what I would have liked to seen over there, considering the rest of the facility, the way it looked. But again, as long as it's within an ordinance, I guess they can do that. These feather banners, I just feel that it's overkill and there's really not a need for it on a constant basis.
Any other discussion, questions?
Is it, you said thirty-eight percent, that's at this location, not both, right?
Correct, correct.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, Heritage Woods has been there almost ten years, so it's the White Oaks building specifically.
Any other questions by council for that? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
This time I'll open up the public input. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public input? Sir? State your name for public right.
Sure.
Dan Colino. I go by that intersection quite often and it's a busy intersection. I kind of agree with Alderman Collab. A distraction would not be good there. Especially during the school year, kids going back and forth. Post office, got Ace Hardware coming in out of that neighborhood. I just think too much of a distraction.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment by the public? I see none. I'm looking to make a mo, looking for a motion to approve a sign variance at Two White Oaks at McHenry located at forty-six oh five West Crystal Lake Road to allow two feather banners, ten feet in height by thirty-one inches wide, to be posted on the property for a time period not to exceed December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
It's eighteen.
Eighteen. Alderman Shaffer?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Mahavik?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion by the council? Alderman Glad?
For clarity, you said two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and eighteen?
Eighteen.
It says nineteen in the...
It's eighteen. Alderman Santee?
If the ordinance does not pass, or is a sign there, excuse me, they can get a permit to do the fifteen days on their own, correct?
Right, they could do, they could, yes.
Do thirty days a year?
Yeah.
So they would have to do a lot of time, up to thirty days, and then thirty days of nothing posted.
Yeah.
And they could do fifteen days or whatever, up to sixty. You know, four times or sixty days, whatever they hit first.
Okay, just one, thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Shaffer?
I, I mean, it, it's kind of silly to argue with this. We've got a business last meeting that we, is going on our busiest intersection in town and no one raised any questions whatsoever about signage of a busy intersection, so I just find it somewhat silly.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, what you might feel silly in a business district, or you don't feel as silly in a business district, but this is more of a residential area than it is a commercial area. And we're talking housing, we're not talking retail. And again, we're talking, you know, a six month period where our ordinances, I mean, our ordinances are written there for a certain reason. And the question is, is it an appropriate spot? Otherwise, the ordinance wouldn't be there if we had to worry what area, you know. If we were just gonna allow it everywhere, then we wouldn't need the ordinance up there to restrict it. We should just have an ordinance that allow it without coming to council. But the reason why it comes to council is because there's appropriate places to put it and appropriate places to act.
Any other discussion by council? No. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Shaffer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. That is a pass, just so you know. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion to approve a sign variance requested from Jexel's Wings Ziria for the property located at twelve sixty North Green Street to allow one additional wall sign for a total of three wall signs and an additional seventy-four point one square foot of additional signage area not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five point six square feet and additional thirty-six square feet of projecting sign area. Council, do you have any comments or discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Just got one comment or preference, I guess, I'd say, for me personally is, I, you know, I have no problem with all of the signage with the exception of the projecting sign. The arrow at the bottom, let me get to it here. So we're supposed to be indicating takeout and yet we, the arrow is gaming. I would much prefer not to see the gaming on there.
Any other discussion by council? Alden McGladd?
Yeah, I, I would prefer not to see the gaming as well, but that isn't gonna make my decision as far as what I vote for. But however, again, maybe that brings us back to discussions about gaming and licenses that we had last year and there didn't seem to be too much support. It was too, maybe, maybe it was too much for all of us to look at, you know, too quick and maybe we bring that back one of these days as far as to look at, are we looking at some better gaming restrictions? Everything you hear about, everything you see on Facebook, everybody that is critical of gaming is when's enough enough. And earlier, yes, too many of them are going to start dwindling gaming down and just like pubs and everything else, the strong will exist and when we get to a certain point, others will fall. Again, that's capitalism and competitive businesses. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? This time I'll open up for public input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? See none. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve a sign variance requested from Jexel's Wings for the property located at twelve sixty North Green Street to allow one additional wall sign for a total of three wall signs and additional seventy-four point one square feet of additional signage area not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five point six square feet and an additional thirty-six square feet of projecting sign area. Alderman Santee?
I will make the motion to approve the sign variance at sixteen, excuse me, at twelve sixty North Green Street as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Mahavik?
Second motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item?
You know, I do have some concerns, I do have some concerns about that, the gaming, but it's not going to change my vote. This, I know they're not here tonight, but the new owners are just did an extraordinary job of their presentation in what looks to be just a key cornerstone location, facility, right in the heart of downtown. And I think it will present itself very well in that location.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by council? Alden McGladd?
Just the way the motion is read, and again, underneath it says the sign variance shall be valid as it's addressed as long as the use remains a restaurant.
Ross? Correct.
Is that in the motion now? I made the motion. Yeah, it was just listed as a point of information, I think, because it's been brought up in the past. I mean, just so that it's on record that the intent is, is it's only for that use.
Then that should be made part of the motion if that's the case. Otherwise...
I will, yeah, that's, I will make that as part of the motion.
And the second, Mahavik, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council?
So let's clarify what's on the table then.
So as long as it stands as a restaurant, the signage would be...
As a restaurant.
As a restaurant.
No matter who owns it.
No matter who owns it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Shaffer?
No.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is discussion to approve a sign variance requested from Speedway LLC for the property located at thirteen oh four South Route thirty-one for one additional wall sign for a total of three wall signs with a total combined size of one hundred and forty-four square feet and a fifteen foot sign height variance for a total freestanding sign height not to exceed thirty feet. Ross, can you please present this item?
Certainly. Community Development Department received a sign variance request for the Speedway gas station located at thirteen oh four South Route thirty-one. Speedway is proposing an additional fifteen feet in height for a maximum of thirty feet and one additional wall sign on the building. A letter explaining the request in detail is attached. Any questions?
Do you have any, the petitioner is also here, if you have questions on this one? Council, any questions? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, a question. So we have, the request is for a thirty foot high sign just down the street there. Within the city limits, the closest sign is Gary Lane's, right at twenty-two and a half.
Twenty, yes, twenty-two, I believe.
Twenty-two and a half, something like that. And then, and then south of there, there's another gas station, a mobile station, it's outside the city, right, that's thirty foot high.
Correct.
Okay, just, just wanted to clarify. Do we, within, forget about the one outside the city, do we, within the city limits of McHenry, have any gas stations that have thirty foot high signs?
I don't know the exact size of the Sitco or Maverick. I don't know what it is now, at Meadow and one-twenty. But that one is probably close to...
Twenty-five to thirty, that's a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the specific.
The old Sitco you're talking about, besides Dunkin' Donuts?
Sitco or...
Right, yes.
That's a Marathon now.
Marathon.
Mobile or Marathon?
Mobile. Mobile. Sorry. That would be the one that I would, I would think would be, it's definitely over fifteen, but I did not take admission on that one.
I guess my, my point of asking is, again, we don't know that, but, you know, here we have, we have an ordinance, again, a sign ordinance. I realize that we have variances that are requested all the time, but, and we say, well, and when I first looked, I just said, well, geez, there's one down the road that's the same height and, you know, the Gary Lane one is shorter, but, you know, in the area it's in, kind of an industrial, if you will, area. It's not, certainly not a residential area, it's not in the downtown area. But then the more I thought about it, it's like, well, but where does, you know, our ordinances are with our city limits. And so if that's the city of McHenry, I don't think we should just automatically assume that we should go to, you know, much taller signs. Otherwise, again, we create ordinances for a reason and one reason is aesthetics. And I assume that that's why this one was created, for within the city limits of McHenry, we didn't want tall signs. Somebody, you know, past council created this at some point in time, so I guess that's, so that was why my question was like, where do you stop and where do you, where do you decide that the line is between along thirty foot high signs or only fifteen feet high signs or whatever? And I guess I'm looking at it right now that the line is the city limits, so.
Alden McGladd?
Quite a few years ago that the city had talked about signs and I think the real issue that really came up many years ago was with the reconstruction of, or not reconstruction, but the improvements on one-twenty back about, what is it, about eighteen, twenty years ago, whatever it was. That's where the signs first started becoming for some entities were not any longer in compliance and whatnot. But anyway, yes, it was for aesthetic reasons that we didn't want signs up that, that high. And variances are for, more so than anything else, you can never create a perfect ordinance. And I think our decision tonight is, is it really needed for this establishment? Without giving him an additional edge over the businesses such as his that are there now? And is it appropriate for the site that it's at? And I think those are the things that we need to look at, we need to contemplate on and be able to vote on by those type of criteria. Just to say, well, it's Speedway and that's what they usually put up, well, doesn't necessarily mean it fits in that location or that area. And like I said, I think that's what the council has to look at.
Any other questions or comments by council? At this time, I'm gonna go to the public for, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? See none? Council, if you don't mind, would you like me to give you a second? Go ahead.
First, just for logistics, we have the fee amount. My name is Chris Kalashewski from WT Group and with me is Peter Pershaw from Speedway and also, excuse me, Frank Petrich also from WT Group. When you need a variance, you need to prove four things in your ordinance and I hope that by making my presentation, clearly show that indeed, there are four specific reasons why we have a hardship that is not common to all sites. We are actually asking for two variances and I'll go over those quickly. The first one I think is rather straightforward. Our signs, our site, of course, is located at the corner of Dayton and Front Street, our main campus here, we have a little land area here to get to Albany for the signage. You'll notice that we have designed our site for the future IDOT taking already. What that means is that our ID sign is fifty-five feet back from the roadway in addition to the roadway right over. So, that places our sign over here versus at the corner. Now, there are also organizations, two of them specifically, the United States Sign Council and the American Planners Association, that recommend sign sizes for roadways for safety's sake, so that a, a traveler can identify the sign far enough ahead and if they're in the left lane, make the maneuver to the right lane to safely get on, on the right direction, safely to get onto the site itself. As such, just through a mathematical formula that they have, they call, they look at the complexity of the road, the complexity of the road is going to be a four-lane highway with the IDOT taking, they say you times their formula by ten, which is the visual reaction time to get your visual reaction distance, which is over six hundred feet, which actually puts us past this sign over here. So, the acute angle to see this sign, we feel is driving the need to go higher. But let me be very specific on this. We know that when we're asking a variance from you, we need to give as well. So, in light of that, for the ID sign, we're allowed two hundred square feet. We are only asking a hundred and sixty-five square feet. Yes, we're asking to be fifteen feet higher, but we're leaving thirty-five square feet on the table. So, we're not asking for an over huge sign. By your ordinance, you can have a fifteen-by-thirteen-foot sign, that would be a big massive block. We, on the other hand, are asking for a thirty, yes, a thirty-foot-high sign, but it is only much narrower and it, again, only has a hundred and sixty-five square feet of square footage. So, we have space below and this is elevated so that these numbers are in the optimal vision angle for our customers when they're at the vision reaction distance, that's recommended by the United States Sign Council and by the American Planners Association for recognizing that sign, making it safe to move over. Our other signage variance is typically we're asking for three signs instead of two wall signs. And the three, three wall signs are this small cafe at the Gable, the cafe at the building for auto customers, and then on the back side is the reader board for our customers at the CFL pumps. So, again, just a reminder of what the site is comprised of, we have the auto canopy in the front, we separate the auto traffic from the truck traffic, do that very purposely. Again, retail petroleum site is successful if it's convenient, if it's safe. And so, we separate those two, separate that signage here placed in a safe distance so that it can be seen and recognized and then these three signs, one's here, one's there, and one's in the back. The uniqueness to this is that we have a two-sided store and so that's why we need the signs on both sides and quite frankly, at the Gable end is a definition of entrance, kind of an architectural element to help augment the Gable itself. So, with that, even though we're asking for three signs, we are allowed a hundred and forty-four square feet, we are only asking ninety-one square feet. So, there we're leaving fifty-three square feet on the table. Every category that you have for signage-wise, the canopy signage, we are dramatically, we are only like one, one hundred of what's allowed. Because of the square footage, nineteen-hundred square feet is, is allowed and we're only asking a, a very small amount for that. But again, we're not asking for a variance on those items. But what our overall signage is, is that we're dramatically asking for less square footage so the signage can be readily seen and be safe. And so, that's the four things. So, the findings, public welfare and interest to any property, if not, it actually helps define the entry for this additional sign that happens to define the site from a safety standpoint, so we meet findings of fact number one. Finding of fact number two, light air part of it, obviously, it's vertical, we showed it is very narrow in terms of the width itself and it is not a fifteen-by-thirteen block that would be allowed by code, we wouldn't even be here, but that would be breaking sight and light and would not be meeting your requirements. So, ironically, a sign that meets your requirements wouldn't really meet your, your findings of fact. Fire, there's no risk of additional fire from these elements at all. Safety, again, we've reemphasized about traveling and property values. We feel that the sign is very well-done, very professional, ties in to the whole development and will present a very nice development to the whole facility. So, we feel we meet number one and two. Number three, unfair advantage, we do not feel it gives us an unfair advantage, the sign, the third sign is because we have a two-sided store and we need those signs and we have an IDOT taking that we're planning ahead for. We could be not smart and put the sign right here and then it would have to be a taking and then you have the whole problems of those issues. So, we're already planning ahead, making the fifty-five foot today so that when they do widen, widen the roadway, there will be no other changes required and we'll be meeting the United States Sign Council safety requirements. So, we feel that's not an unfair advantage, it's an effect of IDOT's taking. And we feel it's not distracting, it's a harmony of design for our Gable signage and though we are taller, I must remind you, we are thirty-five square feet smaller than what's allowed. So, we're, we're giving to give and so hopefully you can see that we meet all four of your findings of fact for this variance and we are in a unique situation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to look for a motion to approve a sign variance request from Speedway LLC for the property, property located at thirteen oh four South Route thirty-one for an additional wall sign and a total of three wall signs and a total combined size of one hundred and forty-four square feet and a fifteen-foot sign height variance for a free, total freestanding sign height not to exceed thirty feet. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make the motion as just presented.
Thank you. Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion by council? Alderman?
I'll second, I don't know. You know, it's a very nice presentation. However, number one, as far as the site distance, I think one thing that we need to realize is that the gentleman up there is telling you that they're building for the future, it's for the future over there. We're going to have a light over at Veterans, that Parkway, so basically, people are going to be slowing up at that light before getting anywhere near it, but yet they'll be able to see that gas station coming downhill, so there's really no need for it that way. As far as saving the square footage, well, you know, when you're looking at a sign at a lower area, you would expect, you know, these monuments sites and everything, you see them, you know, much larger. But you're not seeing it from miles away and when you're talking that type of a height and, and it's not like he's asking for a two or three-foot height variance, he's asking for double what our height restriction is. To me, it's quite plain and evident where he's going to be is, is you can see him and you can see him from a distance and then as the future goes and this road takes and gets widened by the state, pretty much, things are going to slow down over there, there's going to be more lights and a lot more, you know? And he's going to be definitely set up as, as far as exposure, there's just enough doubt about it in my mind that he's going to have a ton of exposure. As far as a right-of-way, has the state, does anybody know, started to acquire some of the right-of-way over there as far as for the widening of thirty-one? I mean, it's not something that they just came up with last week as far as, you know, with the plans to widen it from Crystal Lake all the way up to one-twenty.
I don't believe so. Has, has the state tried to acquire parts, party parcel yet?
Not, not at this time.
So, they haven't been approached?
Well, we have submitted to them a concept plan that they've approved and they are mentioning that and so we're taking that into apply beyond the design phase, they just haven't let it at first time.
They, they just wrapped up phase one right-of-way act, is for the most part done in phase two?
They'll, they'll be coming before council in the next couple of months to do a presentation on where they're at with their plans for widening between where they ended in Crystal Lake and basically Route one-twenty.
For any more future development down there, it'd be nice to know that. Great. But again, I'm, I'm trying to look at the future and knowing of some things that you know are going to happen as far as a little bit more development there, along Veterans Parkway plus a light and distance for exposure, it doesn't have to be that part. And eventually you'll probably see the speed limits reduced a little bit there as well. Food for thought.
Any other discussion by council? Alderman Mahavich?
I have a question for a gentleman. How tall is the signs on, on your site at Route fourteen and Kelsey Road in Barrington? Do you know that? Offhand?
Yeah.
That wasn't a project in the last year.
There, there a monument sign? I would say roughly about ten feet or so.
Alderman Curry?
Yes, I have a question, follow-up question on that. So, you got a ten-foot-high sign down there, what's the speed limit there?
I would say it's about forty, forty-five.
And the speed limit here?
Forty-five.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
I just think from the standpoint of that there's a thirty-foot sign there from a competitive station, that, in my opinion too, that makes sense that it's existing and this would make this location as equal to and plus it being in the city limits, we want to see it succeed, obviously, so I think from a safety or driving standpoint, it's been established already in that same spot with a thirty-foot sign existing, so...
Any other discussion by council? See none? Clerk, please call them.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Glatt?
No.
Alderman Devine?
No.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Yes? Fill up, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion to approve a professional services agreement contract change order to add phase one engineering services to the intersection street lighting to the Bull Valley Road multi-use project with Hampton, Lenzinny, and Renwick Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ten thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars. Troy, can you please present this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to approve a professional services change order for the, to add intersection street lighting, phase one scope for the Bull Valley multi-use project in an amount not to exceed ten thousand five hundred sixty-six. We seek your appearance. It's a recommendation.
Thank you, Troy. Discussion on this item? Questions? I'm going to turn to the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment on this item? I see none. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve a professional services agreement contract change order to add phase one engineering services to the intersection street lighting to the Bull Valley Road multi-use project with Hampton, Lenzinny, and Renwick Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ten thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars. Alderman Santee?
I will make the motion as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Alderman?
Yeah, so that is our, our largest liability, that is not the county's liability on that at all.
The breakdown is eighty-four fifty-two, eighty county portion and twenty-one thirteen twenty city portion, so they've, they've, what's the right word, they've optioned to pick up eighty percent of that tab.
So, we're going not to exceed ten thousand five sixty-six, but eighty-four fifty-two will be paid for by the county ideally and twenty-one thirteen twenty by the city, correct?
That's correct.
However, the way this is written and the way we're voting on it then is the fact that it's not amount to exceed ten thousand five sixty-six for us or for the entire project.
Troy, can you correct me if I'm wrong when I say this, but we're the lead on it, so the professional services contract is being executed between us and HLR for ten five sixty-six and then the breakdown is, as I already identified it. So, it's, it's not a, it's not an agreement with the county, a separate agreement between the county. You're right in the amounts, but the professional services contract change order is ten five sixty-six is between the city and HLR.
So, I mean, I guess the, what I, my question was, is that ten thousand five sixty-six, I mean, is that limited to the entire project? Or just to the, I mean, ten thousand five sixty-six is that the city's portion that we're limiting to? So, if it was five times larger and greater, that it would still be within the ten thousand five sixty-six, but our portion would, you know, would be in that, that, that price range?
Let me try, let me try this. The, the city has an agreement with Hampton Lenzinny and it's increasing that contract by this amount. And then in a separate deal, we're getting reimbursed or do we front, do we front the money? Or does the...
We, we are, we are paying each bill in total and then we are invoicing the county, which they have a deal set up for.
Okay, so then in a separate...
Arrangement.
Arrangement, we're getting reimbursed for eighty percent.
Okay, so the city's paying the whole thing?
Yes, we have the entire exposure.
That's what I needed to know.
Any other discussion by council? Clerk, please call them.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Glatt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is staff reports, is there any staff reports this evening?
Uh, Dave Peterson Farm, it'll be this.
Uh, Dave Pearson Farm, it'll be this weekend from ten to four, uh, probably a free, uh, fun family event.
Thank you.
And then before we begin will be the fireworks on July seventh. J.C.'s will be organizing that, the city will be, uh, the city will be in charge of the gate and the cars as they pull in this year. Fireworks are at dusk. Yeah.
That's it? That's it? Chair?
Right, up to this point.
Any other staff reports? None? Uh, I have nothing this evening. Uh, city council comments? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, hour and a half before the council meeting, I was always in Chicago on a, uh, for a funeral, or not funeral, but, uh, viewing. And, uh, I did call the mayor, uh, and he did tell me if I was gonna only be five or ten minutes late, uh, you know, that he would hold up the meeting a few minutes for me, and I told him not to, that, you know, continue on, when I get here, I can get here, you know? And luckily, I was only two minutes or so late, but, uh, I wanna thank him for, for the offer. And, uh, I just, uh, my feeling is, is that even if it's for five or ten minutes, uh, you know, not one of us is that great that we should hold up anything that, uh, does, and, uh, you know, people are expecting the meeting to start at seven o'clock. I think we should just make sure that it starts at seven o'clock. I just didn't feel that, uh, you know, it's the first time it's happened to me in twenty-one years, but hey, anything can happen. And I just felt that, uh, that it was our due diligence as a council to continue my leadership. But again, I wanted to thank you personally for offering.
I can, I can take care of the speed.
What's that?
I can take care of the speed.
Well, yeah, but Frank, the thing is, is the, uh, you were in favor of holding it back because you get paid by the hour.
Any other city council comments this evening? See none? Uh, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to enter executive session. I would ask that everyone in this room would please step out, uh, for a short, uh, period of time, and then, uh, we'll go ahead and open it back up, uh, for the last individual action item. At this time, looking for a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of light items ten A, um, five ILCS one-twenty-two C twenty-one of a semi-annual review of executive session minutes, and then also five ILCS one-twenty-two C eleven to discuss probable litigation. Alderman Santi?
I think the motion is presented.
Second? Alderman Glenn?
Second.
Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glatt?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavich?
Yes.
Alderman Dubai?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.